And welcome to the Milford School Committee Meeting, Thursday, November 21st. Tonight's meeting is being broadcast and there is local media on hand. If there is anyone wishing to make a recording or rebroadcast of the meeting, please let myself or one of the administrators First up, we have approval of minutes. We do have a set of minutes. We'll do these separately. Regular school committee meeting minutes for October 24th. Are those that were at that meeting had a chance to review? Motion to accept from Christine, second from Joe, all in favor, five in favor, one abstention. Motion passes, minutes pass. The second set of minutes, we have a regular session minutes, as well as executive session minutes from November 7th. Has everyone had a chance to review those?
Mm-hmm.
Motion to accept. Scott, first from Scott, second from Mike, all in favor, four in favor, two abstentions, me and Donnie, and the minutes do pass. Those are now available. Next up, we have announcements, correspondence, and distributions. Do any members have anything?
Mr. Chairman, I had the opportunity to attend the hospitality and tourism night at the high school, put on by Superintendent Tremblay and Mrs. Bonak. I thought it was very well done. They had a panel of people that work in the hospitality field in the front, and the students and parents, you know, were in the auditorium, well, it was called the A-Wing, that class where it was held.
Oh, we're in the room C-8.
C-8, yeah. And there was a woman that put it on who's in the industry, and she had questions that she asked him. And it was very well done. It was a very interesting evening. But Tuesday, I was actually in a meeting with Chrysler, and I was at the Marriott in Quincy, and all I could think about was the number of people that I saw in the industry that it took to put on this meeting that I attended. It was absolutely amazing. Because one of the things they spoke about that night was the number of jobs that are in the field, and the diverse amount of jobs that are in the field. And next time, I ask you, next time you go into a large hotel or any hotel, start going in the front door and look at the number of people it takes for you to either, A, get to your room, or get into a function hall, or a business meeting, all the way right to IT people. I was amazed. It was really something. So, you know, I take my hat off to you. It was a great night, and I think that, you know, any student that gets involved in that has a potential of a great career. I really, truly do. So, thank you.
Great. Thanks so much, Mike.
Yeah. Tapping into a good opportunity there. Christine?
It probably could go at the end, but I just have to say, thank you to the citizens of Milford for getting out to vote on the casino. I'm really proud of this community for standing up for its character, and a great turnout, which shows how much this issue meant to people, and I think it's a great sign of things to come. And all those people who felt so strongly about getting out to vote, if we could turn some of that advocacy into lots of other happenings around town, I can only imagine how far this town would go. So, I just wanted to put it out there, thank you, Milford, for getting out to vote.
Couple things. One, just to echo Christine's, you know, thanks and consideration, and really, you know, Milford did what Milford does best, which is, it took all the information under advisement, looked at it, and ultimately made the decision that's in the best interest of everyone, and really the future of this town. And not a day goes by that I'm not proud to be a member of this town. And, you know, really, I was unfortunately out of town on business on Tuesday. I did vote. I mean, I tried to vote before I left, but it was great to get that text message that said, you know, that the town of Milford and the tremendous participation by the voters in Milford was just, you know, ultimately, Milford made the decision, and that was the way it should be. So, congratulations, and thank you. And to the efforts of those that really worked hard. So, thank you.
Any other members? Joe?
Just had a couple things. On the patch today, you may have saw Bob Gilmore, who's a fifth grade science teacher over at Stacy, won the, or was one of the finalists for the 2013 STEM Teacher of the Year Award. So, congratulations to Bob and everything that he's doing over at Stacy. Because of his efforts, Stacy received a $1,000 grant from that award. So, that's exciting. And then, also had an opportunity to attend the wrestling match on Saturday night with the special athletes, and that was just a wonderful event. And I want to recognize everybody that was involved in that. Nick D'Antonio, Dan DeWes, the high school wrestlers, Nick's Achilles. It was just an incredible event. And these kids were just soaking it in every minute. I mean, if you could see the smile on their faces, they were all running around flexing, and, you know, they've been training pretty hard for a couple of months now, and it showed. I mean, they're very talented, and they did a great job. So, really excited about that program, and excited to see how that evolves in the coming years.
Yeah, good. Thanks, Joe. Don?
So, Sunday night, we attended the high school Hall of Fame Awards banquet, which was tremendous. And congratulations to my coach, Coach Dagnes, and all the other recipients. And it was just a nice evening.
Thank you.
Just one last piece. Had an opportunity to attend the vertical concert for the Milford choruses. So, it was really all grades participating, everything from high school, all the way down to, you know, the fifth grade chorus singing as well. And it was, it's always impressive to see what our students are capable of, and to see that growth from the fifth grade chorus all the way up through high school, and then have them all perform at the end. It's my third year now of being able to attend that event, and it's just, it's incredible what our music department's able to put together, and just the talent of the students and the children that we have here in Milford. So, I want to make sure I recognize them. They did a great job.
Yeah, that's great. Good. Mr. Superintendent?
I always wanted to add to the comment Ms. Marais made about Bob Gilmore. I tried to get him to come tonight so we could recognize him, because I had a lot of parent feedback, and, you know, he's just a tremendous educator, and brings great representation to Milford and everywhere. But he had some kind of a science meeting tonight, and then I tried to get him for the next meeting, and he's got another different science board. And I said, "Well, you let me know when you're ready. At some point in 2014, we'll get you out here."
So, that'd be nice.
Bob does appreciate the accolades, and we'll come before the board, and we can recognize him more formally.
That'd be nice. Good. Anything else?
No, that's all I have.
That's it?
Yeah.
Next up, we have invitation to speak. Is there anyone here for invitation to speak? Seeing no one. Next up, we have Mr. Len Moore-Cohen, our transportation coordinator here. Hi, Lenny, how are you?
Very good, thank you.
Good to see you.
How are you?
Very good. Okay.
What do you got for us tonight?
All right. We're in our third year on contract for our big buses, okay? And it's time to look at our options, and one of our options is to renew or to extend for two more years.
Mrs. Perry, Mr. Tremblay, and myself reviewed some of the districts, what they're paying currently. And we feel that the option that we, if we do extend, that the price that we're going to extend to is in line with other districts in our area. Vendetti Motors has been our contractor for the last almost 18 years, and it's a three-generation company, so it's a strong company. We've enjoyed good service with them, so my recommendation would be to extend for two more years with Vendetti Motors.
Okay. Any questions, comments?
Last one, do we extend? Do we do a similar extension? Yes. So, it's not like we renew a contract, we just keep extending the contract, right? No, it's in the bid document that we have the option, as the bid holder, to move to a two-year carryover- Okay. -with a built-in percent in that contract. And to Lenny's point, I just want to let you know that he mentioned the districts that we polled and did a survey. The bid with the increase per diem would be the third lowest out of 10. So, it's still a very good bid that we could move forward with two years. It's a guarantee for us to be in that market, so.
If I could comment to Lenny, not knowing from the bus side of it, but the automobile dealership side of it, they've been around a long time. They run a class operation. Joe Vendetti's a great human being, very, very good to the town of Franklin. So, I would say staying with Vendetti Motors would be a major plus, because they run a nice operation. They really do.
Yeah, good.
They really do. The drivers work with us, like school staff with us, you know.
Right.
Having Denise work with us, dispatch, works closely with you over the years, I mean, just an outstanding operation.
They've also helped us, you know, we do own two buses and two vans, and they do train. You know, part of that is we have, our drivers have to get so much training, they let our drivers sit in on their training. So, that's a big plus for us, too. So, they've been, you know, over the years, they've been very good, and, you know, a good partner with the school department and the town.
Good, good.
Are you sure you want to deal with Denise for two more years?
She's still in your office.
Yeah.
Just, any concerns of any kind?
No, not this time, no.
Okay, good. Motion to accept from Christine, second from Mike, all in favor, unanimous in favor. Thank you, Lenny.
Thank you very much.
Have a nice holiday, Lenny.
Happy Thanksgiving.
You, too. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Next up, we have the report of Superintendent Schools. Bob?
Sure, just a few brief updates this evening. The first is the Student Career Job Skills Conference. And to preface this, you'll recall from the goals document that I set out about having students interview skills, and it's going to enlist members of the school committee, and even some of our alumni from our alumni database, and that's still forecasted to happen. An opportunity fell into our lap, as the timing is everything. We became members this year of the Blackstone Valley Education Foundation. So, in past years, we've joined various regional organizations to sort of purchasing power for professional development. We might pay a membership fee and be able to have our staff participate in professional development in those, you know, the By County Collaborative, for example, or the Blackstone Valley Superintendent's Collaborative. The Blackstone Education Foundation is different. We don't have a version of that in Milford. We have, it was originally chartered by the Blackstone Valley Chamber of Commerce, and it became its own separate 501(c) organization, of which now I'm a board member this year. I was just trying to get that started, some version of that in Milford through the Chamber of Commerce. But that hasn't, it's really, you know, a lot of work to do that. There's a separate directorship needed, and we haven't pursued that yet, although I've leveraged a lot of Milford businesses, as you know, with the Milford schools, and making it work in that regard. In any event, the Blackstone Education Foundation has established some programs, and this is a new venture, and it actually tied in pretty well with the goal that I had set for Milford for this school year. And it's called the, it's the Student to Career Job Skills Conference, and I put information in your packet on it, if you wanted to look at that. But just to highlight it for the benefit of people who don't have this in front of them. But all students, juniors and seniors, will begin their morning attending a 30 to 45-minute orientation. I say all students, juniors, and seniors. I don't mean all of Milford juniors and seniors. This is the towns that are part, who contribute, who pay a membership fee to this organization. Looking at about 25 to 35 of Milford students to be part of this experience. They would have a chance to have some sessions. This is provided by Workforce Central, searching for jobs, resume writing, preparation, interview skills, dressing for success, many of the same themes that I talked about in the goal setting. But this has already been established, and it's regional. So, I'm going to just ride the coattails of that one, at least for the first phase of this, and then expand upon that in the springtime. It's designed to be, again, 25 to 35 of our students, the chaperones will be involved. The Blackstone Valley Education Foundation will provide and pay for transportation for our students to do that as part of our membership fee, requiring the students to dress for success as they go to this event. So, really, it'd be like a conference that these students would attend and gain these valuable workforce skills. So, I wanted to just give the committee an update on that. I thought it was relevant to the goals that we set for the year, and again, really focuses on the workforce development piece.
Bob?
Quick question.
Sure.
So, how would these students be selected to participate?
Working with Kerry Bonak and with Matt Bayon, and finding which students would best represent the school department, who might be interested. This is not necessarily just for kids who are entering the workforce, but just to have that skill set. The benefit of having, going to this event, and I'll be attending as well, is to see what they're doing, and then to bring that back to Milford, and to the extent that it's successful, replicate that for our own students on grander scale in Milford in the springtime. That's when I would call all of you back to assist me, as well as our alumni, and have another alumni event, where we're now having them engage in more career exploration, interviewing, the same kind of idea.
Just hang that down.
Yeah.
But the principals would select. But the principals would be selecting the students.
And then, the spring session would be, to your point, more encompassing. We would touch all students at that point.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
My question was just, so not to overcomplicate the simple here, but can you, how's that selection process going to look? I just, I can envision some parents saying, "Hey, listen, why didn't Johnny get selected?"
Yeah, there's guidelines that'll be coming from Paul Linsky, who's the chairman, the president, CEO of the board. He'll provide it to all the school districts that are participating in that. But right now, we're working on just recommendations from, it's a new venture for them.
Okay.
So, I don't have an answer for you as to what the criteria will be. That's why we've put it out to principals to sort of think about which students might represent us best. Because it's really more of a representation of Milford for these 25 or so students who are juniors or seniors-
Yeah.
...at this event, and then have those kids come back and really help us to structure something, and engage them to structure something for our other students back here. But I don't have a rubric or any kind of a matrix that they'll use for criteria. But I can get back to the-
Yeah, just thinking about it, it's, again, not to overcomplicate the simple here.
No, sure.
As I think about it of, you know, if my son or daughter was selected or wasn't selected, I want to be able to at least be able to have that conversation with them as a parent, to be able to say, "Hey, listen, your friend Sally's going, and you're not going, and here's kind of why he was chosen, or why she wasn't chosen," and be able to at least kind of have that conversation, to the extent that we can.
Sure.
And be able to explain kind of what they need to do.
It's a great question. Let me find out and see if the criteria that's been set for that, and get back to the committee on that.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, because, you know, with December 5th, it really doesn't leave a whole lot of time with, you know, Thanksgiving in there-
No.
-to get things organized and moving, so.
Yeah, it's two weeks from today, so.
Yeah. We had to get the information not too long ago. The email that I got was on November 14th, and that was not even the finalization yet.
Right.
So, we're moving as quickly as we can with what we've been given. But again, that's why I want to see what sort of successes there are, what they're tripping on, and then improve that, so when we do it here, you know, we can make sure we get it right.
Agreed. Yeah, sounds like a good opportunity.
So, but I'll get back to the committee on that. There may well be, there may well be criteria that have been set, that it's been communicated to principals that I'm not aware of. So, I'll find that out. The next update that I had for you this evening is on the Hospitality and Tourism Management Program. We had a successful parent event, as Mr. Walsh pointed out in the announcements. We had a number of families that came, a number of families couldn't be there that evening. All in all, we have about 20 student applications that have been signed by parents as well. And again, you know, we're looking for about a cohort of about 20 students anyway, 15 to 20 students for year one, to make sure we can run the program successfully. And so, we'll have, we'll begin that screening process, and we have questions that have been laid out. I've worked with Kerry Bonak, Matt Bayon. We actually had a meeting with our program advisory committee. As a requirement of Chapter 74, you'll recall that we're going to do this program and submit an application in April, which would allow us to have this program recognized by the state as an approved, hopefully as an approved, Chapter 74 program, which in the next year would be a greater return on our investment. It would up to the $7, $70 that we get by about $5,000 per head for each student who's in the program. It would be a first, having a Chapter 74 program within a comprehensive high school. So, the application is pretty involved, well underway, though. And one of the requirements was having minutes submitted from a program advisory committee. Well, we don't have a program advisory committee. We're not required to have one unless you're a Chapter 74 approved program. So, we're behaving with this program as though we're being fully compliant with Chapter 74. So, we had a meeting this week, and it's pretty specific with limitations. For example, Kerry Bonak and I are both on the committee, but we're non-voting members. None of you could be on the committee under the law, and no additional administrators could be. It's really intended to be driven by the program coordinators and the area businesses that guide the school on how the program should look based on the workforce needs. So, that meeting has happened, and coming up now, after Thanksgiving, we'll begin the interview process, screening process for the candidates for the program. And then, by mid-December, we'll name our very first Hospitality and Tourism Management Program cohort. So, well underway there. Are there any questions on that program?
Well, you know what else I meant to mention, I thought was very interesting, was the professor that was there from Johns in New Wales, Mr. Mastriani?
No, it was Peter's Achilles.
Achilles, I'm sorry. Was saying that because the world is global now, you know, parents are sending these children into these, you know, programs, thinking, you know, they're going to go to work for Marriott, they may end up in Boston, they may end up in Dallas, Texas. He has students all over the world, because what's happening is, because Americans are traveling all over the world. And he named the countries, China, Japan, Dubai, Saudi Arabia, Brazil. They're recruiting Americans because they have Americans going there to conduct business. And not only do they want them to feel at home when they're in the country, they can speak the language, they understand the culture. So, these students are being offered the moon to go to these other parts of the world, and their careers are just flourishing, which is another major plus. Yeah.
Yeah, it's really, there's a lot of legs this can grow from this. We had, at the program advisory committee, I invited Quincy Community College to the table. You know, we've had some work with Mass Bay and Quincy Community College, both. The way the regional lines are drawn, we sort of have to work with QCC if both schools offer comparable programs. If Mass Bay offered a program, for example, that QCC didn't, we could make the case, provided the presidents agree of the two schools, to allow that to happen. So, we've been grandfathered in. We have three articulation agreements with Mass Bay. Our staff in Milford are adjunct staff to Mass Bay, and many of our students will matriculate there. QCC, we don't have as much right now, but we're growing that relationship. We invited the Hospitality and Tourism Management Program Director from QCC to the table, who's now a member, a full-fledged member of our program advisory committee, to talk about the dual enrollment kinds of options that I mentioned when I first pitched the idea to the committee about where students in their senior year, for example, could begin to have college credits applied, which are transferable to either QCC or a four-year institution. And that's now underway, which will come at no cost to the students in Milford. So, that's the next phase of this project. So, it's really coming together in a very nice way. I'm hopeful that we'll have a great cohort of students to begin the program with, and certainly we'll have more discussion about this as the budget season comes up in December. Any other questions about the Hospitality and Tourism Management? Again, I appreciate your support on that, and Mike, thanks for coming out that evening.
You're welcome.
The final update actually came from the Woodland School Building meeting to this meeting tonight. It was two o'clock, working group, and then a 5:30, full school building committee. We're getting down to the next, to the next major milestone of the Woodland Project. And that's the presentation of the schematic design to the state, which is, what that really means is the final numbers. You hear a lot of numbers that are put out there. Now, we're trying to vet that and do this, what's called value engineering, and finding out if this is the number that it costs to build the sort of pie in the sky, how close are we, and then working to make some adjustments to get the school that we need for Milford. That's a discussion that's probably still going on right now down the hall. Once that's finalized, and we'll be coming again on Monday to finalize that, people have some time to look at the recommendations from the working group. And on Monday of next week, we'll take some votes on that, and then move to the schematic design, which is then presented to the Massachusetts School Building Authority for them now to vet it. And they may look at this and say, "Well, we see what your town has presented, but we disagree here, or we agree here," and they'll go through that process. Once that's finally decided, and the number's agreed upon, that's the number that sticks, and then it's all over. Nothing can be changed or added. You can change things around, but that number is the number. So, that's not a number that I have for you this evening. But that is the next step.
So, out of the words, the committee goes in there with the figures and a proposal and the schematics, and it's hashed out then and there with the School Building Authority?
It is. Yeah, and the way we did it with Construction Management at Risk, which is the preferred method that we used, means that the contractor, you know, owns some of that liability. So, you have a contractor sitting at the table, the general contractor is shaman, sitting with us as we, so you end up having the architects assess, you know, the estimates. You also have the builder's estimates, and then they reconcile those. So, the very beginning, so the idea is you'd hopefully would have less change orders, and you'd have a better quality school from the beginning, because the builder knows what the conversation has been up until now. But once you settle on that final number, that's the number we'll take the town meeting, and then to say, "If it costs X number of dollars, what's the return on investment, what's the reimbursement rate?" That's important, because, you know, Christine, you mentioned this about getting the town and advocates, and sort of want to have Steve Tredle and John Seaver now out there pounding the pavement for Woodlands, because what we need to do is to have the community realize the need for this.
Yeah.
And as I mentioned at the last meeting, and the invitation stands, members of town meeting in particular, I'm happy to walk them through Woodland School, particularly during the school day.
Yes.
That's the most important part. I know we can offer things, you know, after school hours, but I'd be happy to do that during the day. What we did today, if any of you have children at Woodland School, you might have already heard about it. Did you already hear about it today? There's a lot of excitement and buzz in the school. Hopefully, it was positive feedback that you heard. But Craig was doing his morning announcements, and I went and visited the school, and I arranged for a couple of high school students, video production students, that we freed up today for about four hours, to take a digital camera and come and capture what we see day to day, in a way that doesn't put kids out there, images of kids, or-
Right.
-but to demonstrate the overcrowding need. We actually thought about putting a camera on some, actually, Mel Cito offered up her son Tommy, to put like sort of one of those GoCams, and kind of walk around from a student's perspective. But the quality of the film wasn't going to be as good as the digital camera that we had had. So, these kids did a great job. So, you have high school kids that are more or less using their creative liberties, and they spent, I took the microphone from Craig this morning after his announcements and said, you know, "We're excited. We have a camera crew here today, and they're going to be walking around the school, and if you see them, say hello. And if you have a comment, meaning to the teachers or the students, you know, pull them aside and tell what you think." So, I'd be very curious to see what we get for raw commentary.
I'd like to see.
But those teachers that came right down and said, "I have something to say," and, you know, they were on camera. It was really, it was really great. But just to see the energy of the school, and these kids thought they were, you know, touching fame, you know, as these camera crew came in, they all felt like they were superstars. So, it was a great day, and the message is loud and clear that we need to get the word out about the need for this school. It's not going to happen if people just see it from the outside and say, "I'm sure it's fine. It was fine 20 years ago. It's fine now." The case is, it's not the case. And it was great, because teachers were calling into the office, saying, "Make sure you send the camera crew at 9:25 to this location. They've got to see what we see with the sort of congestion of students."
That's great, though.
Yeah, it was a lot of fun. That's the approach that I took with this. The next step is, and the reason why I haven't been able to roll a video out before now, once they agree on things like flat roof, pitch roof, steel roof, asphalt roof, whatever the design's going to be, there'll be some rendering in the next couple of weeks that will come out of that. Once I have the renderings, the idea is that I take the video footage from today, set it to some sort of, you know, catchy soundtrack, have bullet points about what the overcrowding issues are, no narration, and then go into, unless there's some commentary from the staff or students, and then merge that into some renderings of what the new school will look like, and how we resolve some of the issues that they would have seen from the video experience. I'm envisioning some sort of three to five-minute video that we can get out to every member of town meeting, and then we can get on our Facebook page, our website, and push that out. And then, the last piece of this, which you got an email from Melissa today, in which I have a hard copy for you, I'll just distribute. There was a request, Ms. Marais had requested, that we have the contact information of PTOs and their meeting dates. We have, I have PTO meeting dates and school council dates and contact names. I think you have this electronically, but I think you can have it in hard copy as well, if it's easier. And we've also arranged, it was a request to reach out to the senior center. So, we did that as well, and sure enough, Sue Clark agreed with me before bingo was the best time. So, if you are feeling like you want to talk to some senior citizens along with me and play bingo-
I'd be glad to go on that Wednesday.
Okay, so you saw the-
Yeah, I'll go on that Wednesday, but, you know, a couple of us go, and I'll help, and I'd love to have that video done in time.
Yeah, I'm hoping to have that video done by next week.
I'll help you with that video, if you need help. But definitely, I think it would be great to go on that Wednesday.
And to show it, and-
Absolutely.
That'll be your talking point.
And then engage them for the, however many minutes we have before Power Bingo, whatever that was.
Right, Power Bingo, that's right.
Don't be late.
No, I know. Have to work from home that day to make sure.
The, and we'll also, I'll also prepare for you after Monday's meeting. Once we settle on all the various menu items that have to be voted, and your dad was there, you know, today, and saw him today, talking with him about some of his ideas.
Just in the car.
Yeah, just, yeah. Well, I'll provide you all with sort of the elevator speech, the bullet points, what you need to be able to say and communicate, the details, in case people ask, you know, what are the real high-level specs that you need to be able to communicate.
Strong understanding of the finances behind it, too. So, I think that's where a lot of the questions have been stemmed from the senior center.
Yeah.
Right.
And I would think to just, and not just gross numbers. Like, how do we get there? Like, what's the proposal? Because I think a lot of the concerns that I hear from people is, they hear the total number, then they hear Milford's total number, and it's the... There, I think some of the concerns are, you know, we think about, you know, one of the great parts about Milford is, is we treat the town money like we treat our own money.
Right.
Right? And if we look at something where, listen, I got $10 million in the savings account, and I got a $30 million bill I got to write, how do I get there? So, I think we need to- So I think we need to be pretty clear on that.
Yep.
And say, listen, and, and talk about how we get there and it doesn't, and it doesn't, we're not talking about proposition two and a half overrides. We're not, and the fact that it's not even on the table. We're not talking about going down the road that a lot of other communities have had to go down to finance schools because Milford's done such a great job and made such great decisions over the last decade in preparation for that, but I think we need to be clear.
Yes.
I think we need to be extremely clear.
Yeah, I, I mean, the, the, the general return here is about fifty percent as we know on the, on the project cost, or whatever that number is finally, about fifty percent of that. It, it does get a little complicated because there's certain, um, points you get back, you know, if it's, you know, certain green efforts that you're doing it might yield a higher return, so we'll have that sorted out, we'll, I'll do the best we can to have those answers, um, you know, in the next couple of weeks for you, so you can talk to those points.
Yep, we may, we may want to, just knowing our finance committee partners and, and what a great job they do with trying to, and, and working with the town treasurer and, and what, and the creative ways of being able to help finance things like this. Um, to get, make sure that we have a really good understanding, especially when we get in front of groups like the seniors and the PTO, so that we're not going down the world of, of, of high finance, but it's, they understand that it doesn't mean that we're going to tax them out of their homes. Cause that's something that I, I think we, we're not even close to that. But I think it's an important message that when we deliver this, that you can feel comfortable in voting and supporting this as a town meeting member, that it's not going to chase people out of their homes, we've done the right things leading up to this, this isn't something that we made a decision last week on.
Right.
And there's a method, and there's a ra-, and there's a route to success here that leaves everybody in a great place.
Wouldn't be surprised to see that question come up that night, though.
And, and that's why I was saying, I think we ought to be armed with it, cause I would,
Yeah.
I, I would bet my left arm that that question will come up that night.
Yeah.
Sure.
If we, I mean, we have some alumni on the finance committee, right?
Yep.
So if any of them are willing, are free that day, if they could attend, that might be helpful, too.
So I don't know how you, we don't have a lot of time bef-, there's, there's not a lot of meetings that are going to happen between now and ultimately when this goes to a vote. Uh, and, and, and it's really important that we get it, uh, we, that we have support for this because the, what people have to understand is that it's not every year that you have an invitation opportunity from the MSBA for this reimbursement. If this doesn't happen now, we're going to be left with this Woodland School that we have for, for the foreseeable future, um, because they won't take us seriously going back for the capital pipeline. It had been six, seven years we've been trying to get this, uh, statement of interest to be reviewed. They finally did review that, as I've mentioned before, and being invited to, and getting to the point where we're at now, um, we've got to push this forward and, and, and be successful, otherwise Milford will have to pay the entire cost, uh, in the future. Um, so I, I don't know how you want to set dates and, and do that, I just know that.
So can we send out an email and see what people are available and go from there?
Yep.
I'll be glad to coordinate it, if you want to help me, Joe, or whoever wants to help me.
What is the date again, Bob?
And go by this list here.
There's, well, there's multiple meetings, I, I can have Melissa.
If, yeah, if Melissa can do that, that's great, and she can just pick and choose.
But your goal, Bob, but, sorry, Chris.
No problem, go ahead.
Your goal is for us to try to hit as many of these as we can and support.
I don't think all of you have to be at all of them, if you all pick one.
I think just two, like, yeah, I think if you have two there and each, it's all you need.
Yeah, we can divide and conquer.
And then.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, and then we can have, if, if, I'll have Melissa coordinate, but then when, when we know who it is, we can, uh, let the president know and then you're on the agenda at the beginning of the meeting and you can, you know, show the video, uh, that we'll hopefully have wrapped up, um, in the next week or so.
Yeah, so let, let us know then, as soon as that is ready and we can review it.
You know, Memorial and Brookside are going to be an easy sell, so to speak, so we really want to focus our efforts on the high school and, you know, Stacy and middle, where those parent, a, a lot of those parents have done it.
The Woodland PTO would be probably a pretty easy sell as well, I would imagine.
Yeah, but they're not going to reap the rewards of a new school, so, you know.
I've also, um.
So if you have to choose.
Right.
You know, the schedule's going to have.
I visited all the schools, uh, the other day, working with a local, you know, with Frank's Appliance locally about putting TVs to install, um, uh, televisions in, in certain locations, each of the, uh, Shining Star, Memorial, Brookside and Woodland. And the idea there is to generate some excitement about the project and as time goes, we'll, uh, for now, we'll show this, this video that, that, you know, I was speaking of. Uh, once the project's, you know, being optimistic is, is approved and moving forward, then we can show progress, sort of time-lapse progress of the, to get really people excited about what's happening in town, and if they're not watching the construction day to day, it'll be a great project for us to, to share with the community through these, in addition to our Facebook and all that, but it's just one more way to promote the good work that's happening in town on this project. There's a lot of excitement, a lot of things happening with that.
Good.
Uh, any other questions that you have that I can try to address?
Circle back to the, you offered the tour so the town meeting members, um, so we envision going to town meeting in February, is that the case?
Yes, as of right now, yeah.
Do you think, would it be wise to get something on the calendar for late January, early February to actually set a date where we can bring in town meeting members for a presentation? I, I mean, I know they can do it anytime by reaching out to you and doing a tour, but we should probably have something on the schedule, on the calendar.
So let me draft a, uh, let me draft a letter that would be going to town meeting members, in which I would include this five-minute DVD. And then in the same time, invite them to come for a discussion about what they'll watch on their own, uh, with members of the school committee. We can post that as a meeting and have, invite anybody, that'd sound like a good approach. Maybe do that in, and maybe do that in January or do that earlier, December's coming up on us, so.
I'd say the couple of weeks before, get people.
I would say, I would say late January, I would say pretty early.
Do it before the holidays.
Okay. Yeah, that's, also I'll draft a letter for the, uh, for the next meeting for us to pick as an agenda item, personal feedback.
That'd be great.
Then I would say, Bob, also if you don't get any, um, or not a lot of interest and people, um, town meeting members wanting to tour the schools while it's in session, maybe throw out a Sunday afternoon at least just to get them in there. You know, and maybe we can be playing the video, but, you know, seeing most of them are probably working during the day and it might be tough for them to get out, you know?
Okay, sure. Very good, and that's all I have for updates this evening.
Good, thank you, Bob. Next up, we have the report of the Assistant Superintendent of Business and Human Resources, Kathy.
Uh, for the committee's approval this evening, I have four warrants, the first warrant is in the amount of twenty-three thousand, six hundred, thirty dollars and forty-nine cents.
Motion from Christine, second from Scott, all in favor, unanimous in favor.
The second warrant is in the amount of one hundred ninety-five thousand, three hundred ninety-eight dollars and ninety-five cents.
Motion from Don, second from Mike, all in favor, unanimous in favor.
The thor-, third warrant is in the amount of twenty-four thousand, seven hundred eighty-three dollars and thirty cents.
Motion from Scott, second from Joe, all in favor, unanimous in favor.
The last warrant is in the amount of thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred twenty-four dollars and ninety-nine cents.
Motion from Christine, second from Joe, all in favor, unanimous in favor.
The committee does have the, uh, updated financial statement, I would like to, uh, make a note that as of today, um, the potential out-of-district budget has been fully absorbed with new students attending out-of-district. We are, uh, not in danger, it's a volatile number, it could go one way and go back in our favor next month. But right now, we have to watch that budget line very closely as the, uh, months proceed. Uh, we also have two, um, out-of-district field trip requests. One is for the Memorial School Grade One to attend the Stadium Theater in One Socket, Rhode Island on April eleventh. There will be a hundred and three students attending and it does require your vote.
Motion.
Motion from Christine, second from Scott, all in favor, unanimous in favor.
The second field trip that requires a vote is for Brookside Grade One as well to attend the Veterans Memorial Auditorium on Tuesday, May twentieth, with a hundred and eighty-seven students attending.
Motion from Mike, second from Don, all in favor, unanimous in favor.
There is also a list, no vote is required, of the latest appointments from our previous meeting. And I have some information on the out-of-state field trip that, um, Christine had requested. Uh, Mrs. Burns was nice enough to look back on the last few years. And we have approximately fifty percent of the students that attend the DC trip as well as the fifty percent that remain, the cost to those student is, is approximately a hundred to a hundred and fifty dollars for Heritage Week. No student goes without financing. Mrs. Burns has resources available that she has direct contact with that pay for any student that would like to attend either the, the DC trip or the Heritage Week. So the answer is that all students do participate, it's a hundred percent participation and no student goes without.
That's great, good. That's, that's a great trip to the kids and, and, and I know that those stay back to Heritage Week, always have a great time as well.
They do.
If I could add one more budget item to the, uh, Kathy, if you don't mind, I was just thinking about our budget sessions last year and whether the committee has an interest in doing another Saturday.
Yes, yeah, I was, I would think it was a very concise, effective way to be able to do it, I think it put everybody around the table with our head wrapped around it. Um, we were able to, I think everybody asked a lot of questions and really get a lot vetted out and I, personally, I, I thought it was a really effective session.
It's much easier to schedule for everybody than multiple nights and, and you got to get back on the same page, I thought it was really well done.
Okay. Can you, you, uh, Melissa maybe?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll do that.
It was January for last year?
Yeah, given that it's coming up, we've been, uh, we, we've been working on budget and principals are working on budget now. We'll start our budget defense meetings, uh, that process, you know, our principals will develop their own budgets, they'll come to Kathy, me, Kevin, Meg and Jen and, uh, we, we go through each budget line by line. Uh, once that's been vetted and we're comfortable with it, with whatever's been proposed, uh, we will then bring that, and, and I don't mean just what we agree upon, we'll bring everything the principals give us to you though for consideration as well, and then we'll make some recommendations based on what we've discussed with them. So I would envision probably, probably January then we'll do that again, Kathy?
I'd like to do early January, just knowing that we have a few areas that we have to concentrate on that will be a budget impact.
Yeah.
And it's shaping up to be a busy January too, so we should probably get that in early, I would agree.
Yeah, so we'll do FY fifteen, two thousand and fifteen budget meeting, uh, on some Saturday in, uh, in January, I'm assuming morning is okay, everybody will start.
Starts by morning.
So we'll, it'll start in the morning and end at night or something, so, uh, well.
As long as we get a time.
We scheduled for last time, like, five or six hours or something?
Yeah, we did, and it was, but it was great, we didn't have to kind of rea-, reacquaint ourselves.
Right.
The stop and start are brutal, so it's, the one continuation was.
Okay, so we'll arrange that for a, for a Saturday, thank you.
Good. Thank you.
And there are gifts, Mr. Chair.
There are.
We'd like those.
We have two gifts this evening. The first is from Alternatives Unlimited Incorporated and Affiliates, um, in the name of Gillian Dulick gift. Uh, the purpose is for high school special ed supplies in the amount of a hundred and fifty dollars. Motion from Scott, second from Christine, all in favor, unanimous in favor. Thank you, that was very nice of them. We also have a donation, Community Partner for Health, Care the United Way of Tri-County Family Network gift uh, for the purposes of Healthy Choices, Healthy Life, in the amount of six hundred dollars, very generous donation. Motion from Joe, second from Don, all in favor, unanimous in favor, and we thank them too. Anything else, Kathy?
No, thank you.
That's it. Next up, we have new business, do any members have new business? None. Do any members have old business?
I do.
Christine?
Um, the AP courses and the scores and how we did this year compared to last year, I'd asked for, um, a synopsis of that. Last year we got a synopsis, we saw a terrific improvement in our scores, number of students participating. And it's one of the reasons that the high school got the award was because of AP course breadth and numbers, et cetera, so.
Carrie's been coming in to do a presentation, she requested to come in and actually recognize some students as well as give an update on that, so.
Similar to last year, so we'll.
I think it's on the December fifth agenda.
Perfect, okay, thank you.
Any other members? Joe?
When, uh, Brian was here a couple of weeks ago to give us an update on the fields, he had mentioned that there was a, an open seat on the fields committee for a school committee member, um, that could be appointed by the selectmen, so, um, I, I'd like to volunteer if you guys are okay with that and I could report back and just keep the committee in the loop on what's going on.
I, I, I think that'd be great, Joe.
Yeah.
We'll take a vote on that, yeah. Motion from Christine, second from Don, all in favor. Yes, in favor, yeah, thank you, Joe, I think it'll be great to have, um, a member of ours on the committee and they do a lot of great work and to be able to help would be a great opportunity for you, I think, so, super.
So now I think we have to, I think the selectmen have to actually appoint me to be on the committee, right? So should I reach out to them or will?
I think that, um, the chair, or Bob, both, they both need to draft a letter.
It should be.
Yeah.
Would we introduce a letter for you?
Yeah. Submit your name, submit your name to.
Brian's phone number?
Select me. So they have to draft a letter and then.
And submit it to their, and you would submit it to their chair to bring up.
Yep.
Yeah, we'll do, I'll work that on your behalf and you can just sign it.
Okay. Very good, thanks. Anyone else?
Nope.
We do have an executive session this evening, um, so we will not be, uh, so, and that requires a roll call? Christine?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Yes.
Yes? Yes?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so we will be heading into executive session, uh, for the purposes of contract negotiations, um, which we cannot otherwise discuss in open session without compromising the position of the parties. Uh, we will not be returning to open session, thank you.